For a comment.
Councilor Littkey.
I happen to be at the Airport Authority Meeting where it was brought up and voted on by the Authority Board, and I just want to commend them on finding ways to lessen the burden of their budget by removing essentially about $18,000 in stipends to each of those commissioners. So, I'm fully on board with this.
Counselors, further comments? Councilor Schroeder.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-2.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Schroeder, seconded by Councilor Towesley to approve Resolution 2023-2. Is there further discussion? Clerk Ravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Towesley.
Aye.
Council Forrester.
Aye.
Council Schroeder.
Aye.
Council Cleberg.
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Counselors. Next up, we have Item D, Professional Services Agreement, concerning approving a professional service agreement between the City of Lewiston and Mountain Water Works Incorporated for the fiscal year 2023, East Orchard Sewer Project Phase III, in the amount of $171,715. We have Director Johnson here with us tonight. Director, please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Again, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In front of you tonight is a contract with Mountain Water Works to design the East Orchard sewer main extension. This is, you may notice in the name, Phase III. So, this is a partnership between the city and the East Orchard, or would be the URA District up there. Within your, the best way I can use to explain this, if in your packet you've noticed there was a map, the map is based off of the, basically, the potential future trunk mains within the East Orchards. And so, all that's happening right now as we tick through these phases is the URA coordinates with the city to determine where the most demand would, or the best use of the funds would go to construct these new sewer mains. And so, outlined on your front exhibit, they've identified segments 1, 17, 18, and 19 as the most highest need right now for the construction of these. And so, in partnership with the URA District, the city is ready to award this contract to Mountain Water Works to design the sewer mains and then construct them. This is a URA-funded project in partnership with the city. All of the proper procurement processes were used to select Mountain Water Works, and will select a contract with a typical bidding process. I don't think there's anything else that I can think of right now, but I stand for questions.
Thank you. Director, Counselors.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Cleberg.
Thank you. No, I'm in support of this project, and granted, this is a contract with Mountain Water Works for design. They're not building it. But, the reason why I really support it is because there is a lack of sanitary sewer out there in the East Orchards. And as the city continues to grow to the east, I think it's in our best interest to move forward with this project and with the help of the URA, because that's where it all started, was running the trunk line up there. So, yeah, we've all seen the photos, well, maybe not we all, seen the photos of what's happened with some of the septic systems up there and smaller lot sizes that can't move their drain fields and stuff like that. So, I think it's very critical in the long haul, you know, looking down the road, 20, 30 years, to increase the availability of the sewer system up there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to build on Council Cleberg's comments of, yes, that is exactly, I did not include that, but this is a benefit to not only the existing homes up there that may get benefit out of gumming off of septic, but also future development in the future for growth in that area of town. So, it's not pro-development, it's not for, it's for everybody who is either living there now or will be living there in the future.
Councilor Schroeder.
Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the, excuse me, the Professional Service Agreement between the City of Lewiston and Mountain Water Works.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Schroeder, seconded by Councilor Towesley to approve the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Lewiston and Mountain Water Works Incorporated. Is there further discussion? Not. Clerk Ravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Council Towesley.
Aye.
Council Forrester.
Aye.
Council Schroeder.
Aye.
Council Cleberg.
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, under our active agenda is Item E, Request for Proposals Award RFP-22-016 EMS Billing Services, Considering Award of RFP-22-016 for EMS Billing Services EMS Management Consultants Incorporated and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign the Associate Agreement Between EMS Management Consultants Incorporated and the City of Lewiston. This is an action item. Counselors, and we have Chief Michaelbus with us here tonight. Chief, please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening at home can hear what you have to say. Thank you, and welcome.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Travis Michaelbus, Fire Chief. What you have in front of you is a proposal. So, when the former government changed, there was some changes. Ambulance billing used to be under Administrative Services. They were brought under the Fire Department last summer. With that allowed me the opportunity to do analysis and look at where we are today, and knowing that actually, effective today, I did receive the retirement announcement from one of our ambulance billing clerks that will be leaving April 28th. And with that was a prime opportunity to truly look at what we're doing, what are we not doing based upon the number of staff. And I will tell you that the current two members of our ambulance billing team do a phenomenal job, but they're only two individuals. And the volume of our calls, you know, call volume being up over 15% over the last five years, shows a bolstering of workload. And truly, to keep ambulance billing within us, not only would we have to replace the retired individual, but we would definitely have to add one more full-time employee. That adds a lot of expense to the city, to the Fire Department budget, and space. So, what we did is we went out, we started looking at third-party services, and we actually determined that this seemed to be a good option. We did an RFP. We had 11 companies that had submitted. Nine of them met our eligibility, and we went through, and we reached out with EMSMC to find that that being the best company. What this is going to allow us to do is a couple of things. One, it will allow ambulance billing to move from City Hall over to the Fire Department. That will free up some much-needed space in City Hall. Number two is the current ambulance billing clerk will retain their position. We will still need that position to do these duties, to kind of be the clearinghouse up to the third-party provider. They'll also be able to support on many EMS levels of administration that we currently don't have today, being a liaison to our hospitals, our extended care facilities. So, that staff member will not be losing their job, they'll maintain. But more importantly, as you know how I look at things, I look at it from a business model, and this will save the Fire Department and our citizens money each year. Even though we have to pay this company to do it, we're going to have the savings of the wages, benefits, and training, and software we currently do with ambulance billing. But more importantly, because this is a large company, they have many more tools in the toolbox. They'll have dashboards that we'll be able to see. We will be able to actually collect more revenue than we currently do today, and that's due to just only having two people. Once again, as I said in the beginning, our staff are absolutely amazing at the job they do for only two people, but this will allow it. You will see in my proposal, this is a five-year contract. In the life of the five years, we're anticipated to bring in an additional just shy of $1 million of revenue. And you know me, anytime we can take and bring in revenue to help offset the taxpayers and our property taxes, that's a win-win for everybody. And so, what I have in front of you is that request to approve the RFP and the services agreement with EMSMC so we can move forward, transition, and it'll take us a few months to transition into this as we build that, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Counselors, Councilor Schroeder.
Not a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for your creativity and how you run your department and save the city and residents of money. So, thank you so much again, one more time. Thank you.
Council Commerce, Council Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I got a little bit lost in your, the breakdown of the contract and how it, the allowable increase per year. Could you explain that?
Absolutely. So, what it's based on is, is they take a percentage of the revenue they collect, so it's the net. And what they will do is they'll actually add to that no greater than a 5% cost of living. So, let's say that their fees were $100,000, you would see 5% on that $100,000. So, it'd be a small increment. We did negotiate a cap. The first language I received just said a cost of living. It's very hard to budget for it, so we will have a cap no higher than that 5%. So, it's a small increment each year, but that's built into the contract. It's just a cost of living increase for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Council Towesley.
Thank you, Chief. I'm impressed with what you've brought to us to try to save the citizens money. I have, one of the things that I wrote down in my notes is that if someone has, is billed for this in the past, say they were not timely, then what happened? Who got sicked on them?
Well, we have an agreement with a billing, or a collection service, and we will continue to maintain this. So, what this company will do is they will, they will go to a certain degree of that, but once we have that set boundary, then what we'll do is we'll make a determination to turn it over to our collections. The nice thing with these companies is they get very creative because obviously they want to return as much money because it's based on the net collection. But yeah, we will continue to use our current company. The other thing I'd like to mention is the dashboard, is we're going to have real time. We'll know every day how much money they have processed and been deposited. Currently, it's, our system just isn't designed for that, so we'll have very up-to-date information, which I know, and when we go through the transition, we'll have a member of Amy's team on board so that that's accurate. The other is I can pinpoint out the information of a collection. If one of our medics is making a continuous mistake on their documentation that impacts that, I can go to that specific individual and not do the old whack-a-mole where you have to broadcast that we're doing a horrible job with documentation because our revenue's down. This way, we'll be able to go, we can educate them, work with them, and help. And that's one of the things, this dashboard is very appealing to me because it's so broad. But, the rest of the stuff will happen. They'll answer the phone, it's the Lewiston Fire Department, they have hours that match up. That's one of the things, a couple of the companies from the East Coast did not do that, and I just couldn't stand for somebody that, if the city would have been open, this company needs to be open to answer. And our customers will also have an online portal, that they'll be able to log in and set up accounts. We currently do not have that capability either.
Okay. Thank you. Follow-up?
Council Towesley.
So, if someone is having financial difficulties, which a lot of people in this part of the country do these days, how, what I wrote down is, are we losing the city's personal touch about these kinds of things?
Nope, because anything like that will come to us, we'll work with them, and we'll set up a payment plan just like we have today, so they won't be able to make those decisions without that coming from the authorization of the city. So, we'll still be in control. It'll just be this company talking to me versus the two ambulance billing staff talking to me to say yes. And we have, we have some where we receive $5 a month, and we accept that because we know there are hardships on our customers, and we do the best to continue to provide that service and yet get that income, and it may be 10 or 15 years before we get it all. Okay?
So, that part won't change?
This will not change any of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful question, though.
Thank you.
Council Forrester.
You said the medics sometimes can make like an error in the system. Does that cause the customer any grief, and then, or is it, maybe I misunderstood?
No, actually, if there's an error in that, what may happen is they won't actually be able to bill that for that. So, what we do is we work. That's the nice thing, is our ambulance billing staff that we're maintaining, they'll be that clearinghouse, and so they'll do a lot of review before we release that into their billing system. But yes, it does not impact the customer at all. The other is we'll have some opportunities for some signature capturing and interaction with our hospitals. That too will probably, that's where we see some of those collections coming forward, and my projection is just because of the volume and the depth of this company, they'll be able to process more. Okay? Yep.
Council Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more question, Chief. I think this is a great business move. I was looking down here where the one remaining billing staff will be moved to new duties. I was just curious, will that be, become a new position, or will that position be closed ended to where if this person ever left, it would just be abolished?
That position, we're going to need this position, even if they left, we would still need it. This is already a position budgeted and funded in the Fire Department budget, so it's no addition or deletion. But, we would look at that, obviously, if, let's say, this employee decided to leave. We're going to always have to have a clearinghouse, and based on the number of calls we produce, we're still going to need that clearinghouse and that point of contact. So, that's why that employee would be maintained.
Great.
But they are in our budget, so there's no new increase to that.
Council Towesley.
Can I make a motion?
Motion's in order.
I'd make a motion to award RFP-22-016 to EMS Management and Consultants Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Lewiston and EMS Management and Consultants Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Towesley, seconded by Councilor Schroeder to award RFP-22-016 to EMS Management Consultants Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Lewiston and EMS Management Consultants Incorporated. Is there further discussion? Attorney, non-clerk Ravencroft.
Council Littkey.
Aye.
Council Towesley.
Aye.
Council Forrester.
Aye.
Council Schroeder.
Aye.
Council Cleberg.
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Chief.
Great job, Chief.
Thank you.
Very nice. Very well done. Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have Item F, Additional Opioid Settlements, considering whether the City of Lewiston would like to participate in five additional opioid settlements, as announced by Attorney General Waston. Action item. We have Ms. Melinda Rose here with us tonight. Melinda, please, if you'd introduce yourself for the record, and remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those at home can hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Melinda Rose, the grant writer for the City of Lewiston. I bring forward to you the opioid settlements. We have the opportunity to participate in additional settlements with the Attorney General, and so I just am asking if that would be what you would be thinking of.
Counselors? Well, that was easy.
I have not.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Littkey. Oh, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, I, if we were to do nothing, then our legal team would have to go after those people, right? If we wanted to get any money out of these companies. Is that correct?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney, and I would say yes, most likely.
Was there another question, comment? Council Cleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's an old adage, when I owned a bicycle shop up in the Orchards, if somebody wanted to make a deposit, you'd get the money, because you never know if they're going to die in a flaming car wreck on the way home. So, if we got a chance to get the money, let's get the money.
Other questions, comments? Council Schroeder?
No, I was going to make a motion.
I have a motion.
Oh, sorry.
From Council Littkey.
Thank you. That's right.
Council Littkey.
I'd move to approve the City of Lewiston's participation in five additional opioid settlements and authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Littkey, seconded by Council Forrester to approve the City of Lewiston's participation in the five additional opioid settlements and authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Is there further discussion?
Just for a comment.
Counselor.
I've heard recently that Nespers County is going to purchase a screening device that I think is a very good move in our county and valley's direction, and so any money that these two chiefs can come together on and create some plans to fight this is good on my.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Forrester.
Just a comment. Same thing. Doing my ride-alongs with the Police Department and the Fire Department, it is apparent that this is an issue, so I don't think, ignoring it is a wise decision. And like Hannah said, any money that we can put, Council Littkey, any money we could put towards this is important, and so just for the citizens to be aware that we kind of get stuck in our homes and not realizing it, but it's out there, and people are overdosing and losing loved ones, so it's important that we address these issues the best we can.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Towesley.
Yeah, I would also add that we've been spending billions of dollars on these issues for as long as I've been alive in this country, and until we address the causes, what we're dealing with is the effects, and until we address the causes, we're just going to keep putting our fingers in the dikes. So, I'm not opposed to this at all. We certainly can use the money. I hope part of it will be going towards, whether it's think tank, I don't know what it is, but we have to get to a place where we can be looking at causes rather than just dealing with the effects. Thank you.
Further discussion, Counselors? Clerk Ravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Council Towesley.
Aye.
Council Forrester.
Aye.
Council Schroeder.
Aye.
Council Cleberg.
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, Item G, Ordinances. G1, Second and Third Readings, Ordinance 4868, Amending Sections 19.5-12, 23-6, C 30-22, G 31-107, 3, 31-108, 1A, 31-115, 31-116, 1A, 31-128, 6, 31-132, E, and 42-38, C of the Lewiston City Code related to mailed notices. This is an action item. I don't see, oh, there's, no report. Ms. Forrester, yeah, okay. All right. Counselors?
For a motion?
Council Littkey.
I'd move to combine the Second and Third Readings and waive the Third Reading in full of ordinance number 4868.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Littkey, seconded by Council Schroeder to combine the Second and Third Readings and waive the Third Reading in full of ordinance number 4868. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
Council Littkey.
I'd move to approve the Second and Third Readings of Ordinance number 4868.
Moved by Council Littkey, seconded by Council Cleberg to approve the Second and Third Readings of Ordinance number 4868. Is there further discussion? Amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Clerk Ravencroft.
Approving the Second and Third Readings of Ordinance 4868 and Ordinance of the City of Lewiston, Amending Sections 19.5-12, 23-6, C, 30-22, G, 31-107, 3, 31-108, Pren. 1, Pren. 8, 31-115, 31-116, 1A, 31-128, 6, 31-132, E, and 42-38, C of the Lewiston City Code related to mailed notices and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have Item G2, Adoption Approval of Ordinance Summary. 2A, Ordinance 4868, action item, motion to adopt Ordinance number 4868 and approve the related ordinance summary.
So moved.
Council, it's moved by Council Littkey.
Second.
Seconded by Council Towesley to adopt Ordinance number 4868 and approve the related ordinance summary. Is there further discussion? Clerk Ravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Council Towesley.
Aye.
Council Forrester.
Aye.
Council Schroeder.
Aye.
Council Cleberg.
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Next up, Counselors, we have Room Number 9, Items Moved from the Consent Agenda. We have vouchers payable. With that, I will open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Forrester.
I just had a couple of questions. The library service number, or page four, under 107157. Just kind of curious, service call, what that is. I'm not sure if anybody in this room can answer that for me, but...
Mr. Mayor. Council Cleberg.
What was that?
Page number four, I said number 107157. Yeah, it's called the library, L-I-V, service call.
Fisher Services.
Yeah.
Fisher Systems.
That would be our security system, so we had a service call from them to make sure things were working properly.
Oh, okay.
We have a new, we've moved to Fisher, and so we're still working out some kinks, so that was part of that.
Director Johnson, would you please introduce yourself for the record, those listening at home?
Yeah, Director Johnson, Library Director here.
Thank you. I have more, I don't know if anybody else does, though. Okay, well, Mayor. And I guess this is the library, again, page number six, Lakeshore Learning and Materials. It's grant supply. So, is that grants for people, or that can apply for, or just something that we got?
So, Lynn Johnson, Library Director here. That, if it's under grant supplies, would be for the bookmobile. Actually, we acquired some STEM materials to roll out with the bookmobile when it rolls out to the city parks.
Okay, is there a reason it says grant supply? Does it mean that it's grant money?
Purchased through the bookmobile grant.
Okay, thank you. Transportation. Mr. Mayor.
Council Forrester.
Same one, page six, Armstrong Miller Basic Math from Transportation? I don't know if anybody, anybody for Transportation?
Well, those are registration fees for training. I don't have the details on the training. I don't know if Dustin, Director Johnson, has any more information on that training? But it's, looks like it's through LTAC, so that's probably a state-sponsored training, potentially?
I guess the basic math was like, what? That's where it kind of threw me off, where I was curious why we needed to do that, so... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions?
I have a couple, one.
Council Littkey.
On a couple of line items, but probably more for Director Johnson. It's on page eight of December's for Keller Associates Capital Projects. It is for Burrell and Tenth Mini Roundabout Design, equaling close to $9,000.
So, you're speaking of the Tenth and...
Burrell?
Burrell, yeah.
Mini Roundabout?
Yep. That's the mini roundabout that's scheduled to go for, it's up to bid right now, scheduled to bid opening next week, so that's just the engineering design contract for Keller and Associates.
I remember seeing this on our CIP, CIP. Not very high up on our necessity, right?
That one was high. That one was, I can't, I don't have the list in front of me, but that one was relatively high, and the low cost point on that one made that one more attractive than, say, some of the more expensive ones.
And we're talking about Burrell and Tenth, before we drop down, that's going to be a mini roundabout?
Yep.
Are we talking about a mini roundabout like we have on 18th Avenue, or are those different?
Those are traffic circles.
Okay. Okay.
So this would be something, yeah. This would be somewhat similar to what's on Warner, even a little smaller than that.
Oh, by West Park?
So probably three, yeah, probably three-quarters the size of that one.
And I'm just wondering, I've gotten a few questions about it, so I'm not sure when that was last discussed in the public until this last paper announcement, but we've gotten the design and we're scheduled to do something, when?
The bids will open seventeenth is the date I'm thinking, it's, yeah, I think it's seventeenth, and so depending on what we get for bids, the bids will then come before you for award of the contract.
So are we getting grant funding or is this coming out of our...
I think this is all coming out of our transportation fund because it's a smaller project.
Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, and this was actually identified in the transportation program with the MPO. We need a traffic calming device up there and the, the cost of putting a mini roundabout versus a four-way signal up there is gigantic. So if anybody lives up there and does drive Burrell, we have gotten comments, we've had comments from our old reporter, Senator Lee, and I understand their concerns, but the fact of the matter is, that's turned into a raceway. You got the Boys and Girls Club up there, you got a school up there, and I, you know, Director Johnson, I don't know if you have any stats or if the chief's got any stats on what the average speed is on Burrell, I don't care what time of day it is, it's not twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
Director Johnson, I'm going to suggest that we not discuss this, we can talk about the money, but it's not on the agenda item to talk about it. It will come back before council soon, so...
I'll save my comments for later, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Counselors, further comments? If not, I would approve or entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, approved by, or second by Counselor Forsman to approve vouchers payable. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Ravencroft?
Counselor President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Clerk Ravencroft. Counselors, item Roman numeral ten, unfinished and new business. Item A, city council comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselor Littkey?
I would just like to be the first to say that I wake up every day very thankful for our law enforcement, and today happens to be Law Enforcement Day, so I do hope that the Lewiston PD understands our appreciation for them and I hope that the city shows them how much we appreciate them throughout the day. So thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to go like this, which means we can stand out, wing, thank her law.
Mister Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I am glad to be, getting back in the groove of things after the baby, so hopefully I'll be coming to more in-person meetings and thanks for everyone bearing with me through navigating my new schedule and a new little one. So she's doing well and likes to be held a lot and doesn't like to be put down, so thankful when Dad comes home to give me a break. But it's been great, so I appreciate all you guys in the city and just people in Lewiston that have reached out to me and congratulated me and I just feel extremely supported, both in my being on council and a mom to another child.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. And Counselor President Littkey kind of stole my thunder. Yes, I would, I would also like to recognize the chief, did read his email and saw that, but it is important to recognize our law enforcement officers and the job they do. It's not always a grateful job, but I think you guys do a pretty good job with it, dealing what we've got, so, thank you.
Counselor Towesley?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I have, I hope happy news to report is that all of the pieces of the warming facility are now here in town because of weather issues. It slowed the whole process up and as far as I know, the putting together of that facility will start tomorrow. So I'm, we're behind, but, and yet we are still moving forward and as someone who's been working on this with two other members of the city council, I, I can't be more grateful for the people who have stepped up to, to take this on, to, to do that work. And I'll continue to report as I learn more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, item B, ten B, city boards and commission updates. Counselor Schroder?
Is this the time to announce that we need at least one person for the Historic Preservation Commission? Because we're losing, Vicky Ross has resigned after five years of service, so we applaud her for that. And so we just do need to have another application or people come in for applications for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you, counselor. Any other updates, counselors? No? Okay, Mayor comments. Well, right off the top, it's in honor of National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Hannah. Counselor Littkey?
Sorry.
Couple of other items here, though, that I would like to share, but that was worth repeating, so... First one is public meeting, if folks are listening at home, if they can hear, on January seventeenth, from four to six P.M. at the Orchards Community Church, there's a public meeting, Brighton Avenue Reconstruction Phase One Project. That's Brighton Avenue from fourth to seventh, so it's important, folks, if you're listening at home, to please show up, we need to hear from you. And then also on the next day, January eighteenth, from five to six P.M. at the City of Libraries Event Space, there's an open house on the 2023 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. That's the plan where you're going to find items such as the roundabout, which I think was number three on the list, yeah. So if you're listening at home, this is your opportunity to come tell us what you think about this, so we need to hear from you, please. I'd also like to comment, make a comment to Chief Michael Bus program there, changes that he's making, just to remind everybody how these things all tie together. Chief Michael Bus with the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association and the Professional Firefighters of Idaho, last session, last legislative session, helped pass Senate Bill twelve-eighty-three. And if I can just read this to you, it's very quick because it ties into the program that he's working on, where we talked about saving money, but then the ability to, to get these monies where previously maybe we didn't have that. The legislation established provisions regarding supplemental Medicaid reimbursement for ground emergency medical transportation, otherwise known as GEMT. Ambulance services provide more uncompensated care than any other major healthcare provider. Currently Medicaid only reimburses approximately quarter of the true cost of ground emergency medical transport. Supplemental reimbursement would help to further cover the true cost of emergency medical services and greatly benefit rural areas with less access to emergency medical care without a cost to either the state or local municipality. So this is where some of that ties in together, and so again, that was some very good work that Chief Michael Bus and others did last year and we're going to benefit, provide that, and I think that was part of the program, if you read your packet in here. Then also, I'd like to just share a couple of comments from the governor of state of the state in budget address today. I did happen to tune in, and I want to thank him for all the good work that he's doing here in Idaho. He released his plan called the Idaho First Plan and a couple of budget highlights for fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four. Governor's going to invest in ninety-eight, ninety-six million dollars to fully fund known ongoing transportation safety gap. We may be the beneficiary of that at some point. Thirty-five million dollars to improve airports throughout the state. So that's something, if we can tap into that, we should. Anything that we can get to that, I see Melinda's still here, so we'll call on her. Reserves a hundred million dollars for economically significant local transportation projects that are otherwise beyond the reach of local government finances. So we need to tap into this as a city and we need to make, you know, connections with the governor's office, but he's making it available and we sincerely appreciate his efforts on that. Setting aside an additional one-hundred-and-twenty million dollars of state funding for ongoing tax relief to be directed to local government property tax mitigation, I don't know what that's going to look like, but anything that we can do as a city here at the city of Lewiston and the city council members, I'm sure would agree, we're going to take full advantage of that program and see what kind of relief we can provide to our property tax owners here in the valley, especially our residential homeowners. Improving Public Safety provides fourteen-point-eight million dollars to construct Idaho State Police District facilities in Lewiston and Idaho Falls. This is big for our area, folks. We're getting some money to improve our assets out there at the Idaho State Police and so I'm very pleased to see that and I'm sure Chief Cusack and working with his partners there will also benefit from that. Provides one-point-six million dollars ongoing to the Idaho State Police to develop a statewide drug interdiction team to respond to the ongoing fentanyl crisis. Governor, a little shared story today in the state's state in budget address, and it's really sad to hear about the impacts on our families, our Idaho families here. So he's making a commitment to that and I know we'll work with our law enforcement partners throughout this state and here in Lewiston and with our opioid monies that we're collecting, I know Chief Cusack and Chief Michael Bus are going to work with others to try to get as much mileage as we can out of that and then to address the concerns that we're facing, very serious. And lastly, governor's budget, there's much more to it than this. Governor's budget addresses longstanding public health challenges facing Idahoans. Provides twenty million dollars in ongoing federal funding for GEMT to ensure that access to ambulance services and emergency medical care in rural areas remain viable. So this is very key to North Central Idaho, especially where we are so rural, and so I just appreciate his attention to that and I think it's something that probably overlaps with some of the services that we have provided or we're going to provide or work that we've been doing down in Boise. So again, I want to just give a shout out to Governor Little and his staff for their hard work. With that, we move to ten D, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments, action items. First one is considering the appointment of Dennis Orment to a one-year term on the Business Improvement District Advisory Board. I move to approve the appointment of Dennis Orment to a one-year term on the Business Improvement District Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schroder to approve the appointment of Dennis Orment to a one-year term on the Business Improvement District Advisory Board. Question? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Item two, considering the appointments of Tammy Myers, Gary Bush, and Susie Jones to two-year terms on the Business Improvement District Advisory Board. I'm going to combine these into one motion. My motion is to approve the appointment of Tammy Myers, Gary Bush, and Susie Jones to a two-year term on the Business Improvement District Advisory Board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Counselor Towesley to approve the appointment of Tammy Myers, Gary Bush, and Susie Jones to two-year term on the Business Improvement District Advisory Board. Is there further discussion?
Mister Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
Just a quick comment. I just want to remind the public that, that the mayor's not the only one that is involved in this, that they get interviewed, and this is for the public listening, so that's kind of how this process goes, so it's not just all of a sudden we're deciding. So they get interviewed and the council gets to decide in this process, so just so you're aware of how it works.
Good point, counselor. Thank you. Other comments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Item three, considering the reappointment of Leah Boots to the Historic Preservation Commission. I move to approve the reappointment of Leah Boots to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schroder to approve the reappointment of Leah Boots to the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up is Roman number eleven, adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved by Counselor Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?